I'd like to call this Zion City Council meeting to order. Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Here.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Here.
Commissioner Holmes?
Here.
Commissioner McDowell?
Here.
Mayor McKinney?
Here. Mr. Brimner, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
(inaudible) 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 (inaudible)
Pastor Williamson, would you lead us in prayer this evening?
Dear Mayor McKinney and the members of the city council and the citizens of Zion, good evening and thank you for this opportunity. Let us pray. Oh God sovereign Lord who sits on the throne of heaven, who knows all things, knows all hearts, and what is good for all people. Thank you for hearing our prayers. We call on you to be present in this place tonight as we seek for what's best for the people of the city of Zion. We ask you, God, to provide wisdom and discernment, especially for the members of the council, as they hear from us, the people of Zion, providing proper representation and managing what you have given them accountability over. Thank you, oh God, for our city council, for the time and the energy that they give to make Zion a better place for the people. Thank you for all the staff in our city departments and the committees who serve diligently. Thank you for those who serve to keep us safe, the men and women in our fire and police departments. Finally, God, help us to be faithful to protect our children and youth, the leaders of tomorrow. It is only with your help will we manifest love for one another, a thirst for doing what is right in your eyes, and get a renewed vision and strategy for what could be and what should be for the people of Zion. Sovereign Lord, with earnest hearts, we ask that these requests will come to pass. Lord, I thank you that you are with us, so we needn't fear. You are our God, so we needn't be dismayed. You strengthen us, you help us, and you uphold us with your right hand. Amen.
Thank you Pastor Williamson. I'd also like to request a moment of silence, something that we've been starting to do for first responders, not only in our community, throughout the country, around the world, our military, and also for the victims of the mass shootings that occurred in Gilroy, California, El Paso, Texas, Chicago, and Dayton, Ohio. So if we could have a moment of prayer for those people, I'd really appreciate it. Commissioners, are there any agenda changes? Is there a motion to accept the agenda as presented? No move?
A second.
Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Item five, a special presentation from the Lake County Land Bank, Executive Director of the Lake County Municipal League, Mandy Florp is here. Thank you for joining us this evening.
Thank you, Mayor.
And thank you so much for the work you've been doing with us, along with Commissioner Fryerson and ourselves on the land bank. I thought it was crucial, as we've talked about, for a lot of citizens have asked about the abandoned buildings that we have in our community, and the purpose of the land bank, and what that's going to do to help us get rid of a lot of the abandoned properties, commercial and residential.
Yeah, and I appreciate the opportunity to provide this update. And I so appreciate Zion and your involvement from your elected officials and staff to help bring this land bank into fruition. As you'll recall, I was here in 2018 presenting an IGA and asked you to approve it in order to become one of our founding members. So Zion was, I think, our third member to come on board. We currently have seven members. We had Waukegan join last night, which is a great addition to our land bank. The municipalities of Beach Park, Fox Lake, North Chicago, Round Lake, Round Lake Beach, Zion, Waukegan are now all encompassing within the Lake County Land Bank Authority. So we're very excited. We've been meeting every month to get together a plan to establish some funding and talk about operational next steps. This issue of blighted and vacant properties is a huge problem in the county. There's approximately, just a little bit over 6,000 abandoned residential properties, and the average residential property has been vacant for over 1,000 days. So this is a real problem that we're seeing. We're seeing 34% of the county blue book properties return again and again, showing us that a lot of these properties are being bought by investors out of state, that scoop up a large number of properties, see that they don't want them anymore, and put them back on the market. So these remain vacant and blighted, and our municipalities are not collecting taxes on them. So that's one of the major purposes of the Lake County Land Bank Authority. We are, as you are aware, we are just taking the powers that you already have as a municipality, and we're employing them on a larger scale. So benefits of municipalities joining the land bank are that we are able to go to court with, say, 10, 12, 15, 20 abandonment or foreclosure actions, putting them in front of a judge. So it's a very efficient way to do it. It's cost effective to have one legal counsel that knows how to do this, that goes in and takes all these properties in one fell swoop. That's one of the many benefits. Another benefit is that we have these real estate professionals that know what they're doing, they're able to streamline these processes, and we're able to all work together. And then this time, when there's so many added layers of government and different subcommittees and this and that, it's nice to bring all of our municipalities together and do this on a much larger scale. Another great benefit for municipalities is that it's an extra layer of protection. The Lake County Land Bank Authority is its own entity. It can sue, it can be sued, it holds properties, it sells properties. You retain your municipal control for any properties that you decide you'd like the land bank to take on, but the land bank itself is its own entity. So that's another really nice benefit for municipalities. At this point, we were awarded an APP grant in the amount of $250,000, and as you're aware, this is through IDA, and so it's really for demolition, it's for making properties safe, it's for pest control and abatement and that type of thing. So we're working right now on the operational next steps. We need to get some insurance, we need to find some consultants that we're able to work with, and we're able to secure other types of seed funding. So we have a core task force that is right now going out and talking to banks to look into some other additional types of funding where we can use it to pay for legal. The APP funding grant can only be used for property usage, not necessarily for consultants and legal and that type of thing. So that's kind of a very broad overview about where we're at. I wanted to leave time for questions, anything that you want to ask me about the land bank itself, how land banks operate, where we're at. We are still meeting every month with our Board of Directors, and we are expanding to include different types of experts. We have Lake County partners involved. We'll be meeting with the Affordable, the Affordable, Lake County Affordable Housing Authority, Rob Anthony will be coming in to speak with us about some possible partnerships there. And we're still continuously working with the county to get them to join and to be able to combine resources. At this point, they have devoted about 10 hours a week of their staff time to, so that the municipalities and the county can all work together. So what kinds of questions can I answer for you about where we're at, what we're doing, progress?
One of the questions that I have are clarification. When we first brought this up to the city council and with the land bank was forming, we were talking about the cost to the municipalities, how small they are as a result of being a part of the land bank. Could you discuss that a little bit more?
Absolutely. Right, so because you are a member of the Lake County Municipal League, you are able to be a member of the Lake County Land Bank free of charge. And we built into the IGA that we would not be asking for any type of municipal contribution. So our five-year plan has us, in the beginning, being very heavily dependent on grants, which we feel we've been very successful in pursuing and getting. I forgot to also mention, we were awarded another CDVG funding grant for this year to use for operational expenses. So at this point, we've received two CDVG funding grants and an APP funding grant, and we're going to continue to look for other grant opportunities as they arise, and we're going to be looking at some private investment opportunities that we believe, based on our feasibility study, will be amenable to donating and working with the land bank. So at this point, we're heavily reliant on those funds, but as the land bank becomes more and more active in retaining properties and putting them back out onto the interactive use, we will become self-funded. So over the course of five years, the land bank will become self-funded by doing what it's supposed to do with these properties. And like I said, all of that, if you're a member of the league as your municipality, then you are able to be a member of the land bank as well. And we are not asking for municipal contribution, and we took it specifically out of the IGA, so we would not, at any point, do that.
So the first five years, again, deal with demolition. I know there was, at one point, when the land bank was being formed, there was discussion about taking some of the residential homes that were abandoned and possibly fixing those up and putting those back on the market. Is that in the 10-year plan?
Hundred percent. Yes, no, and that's still in the five-year plan. We will do demolitions, but as you're aware, those aren't going to create a large level of income for the land bank itself. So we also will be looking to acquire blighted and vacant properties where the taxes far outweigh the value of the property, where we can come in with our mechanisms, clear out the back taxes, put it back onto the payroll of the municipality, and put it back into active use. So it's a benefit for everyone involved. Neighbors, we've done all these studies to find out, you know, that increases the value of everyone around you for 500 feet. So yes, we will be looking at these vacant and blighted residential and commercial properties, and ones that make sense for us to take on and then repurpose and find a developer. We won't be doing the actual fixing up of the house. We will find a developer, we'll have a core list of developers that have been pre-approved, that have been, gone through the bidding process, that are pre-approved vendors for the Lake County Land Bank to work with. They'll be the ones that then take the properties, fix them, and sell them.
I know there was some discussion at the last board meeting about the prospect of also being able to not only acquire properties, but acquire land.
Mm-hmm.
Could you address that?
Yes, also acquiring land. We are, I mean, the land bank really, there are no limitations on what types of properties a land bank can acquire. Commercial, residential, environmentally impacted, we've talked with stormwater, pure pieces of land, there are no limitations. The board has to decide what makes sense, and between the board members and then our experts from the real estate field and a banking expert and Lake County Partners and Affordable Housing, we all decide which properties are good candidates for us to take on. And the first two years, it will be strategic in an effort to become self-funded. But as time goes on, we'll be able to possibly hold properties for, say, stormwater or some of the more environmentally impacted lands. Set.
Commissioners, have any questions? I don't want to ask all the questions here, but we've been talking about this for a couple of years. I know there's been a lot of groundwork that's been laid. We've had to address a lot of issues. I know when I was the building commissioner about the abandoned buildings and our limitations as a city about being able to take down properties.
Yes.
There's an entire process that would have to go into place before we, as a city, could take down property, and the fact that we weren't a home rural community, which means we're less than $25,000, $25,000 residents, which changes a lot of what we have the power to do, be able to do and not do. So joining the land bank, of course, Waukegan come in, having that population certainly helps us quite a bit.
It does, yes. And automatically, because we have a home rural community, we had, I believe, Round Lake Beach or Fox Lake, one of them came on right away, we're able to use, we just needed one home rural municipality. Now that we have Waukegan as the largest municipality in Lake County, it's just an added benefit. But if you're non-home rural, you're able to use home rural powers through this land bank. So it does expand powers and the ability.
Interesting. When you say "we," like if we acquire property, what kind of a voice does Zion have in that "we"?
Hundred percent. We built into the IGA, it was very, very important for us as the municipal league, our priority is municipalities, and we know that municipal control is very, very important, as is fee structure. So we took out the fee structure, we said, "We're going to just go after grants, and we're going to use our board to help us," because at this point, the Lake County Land Bank does not have a staff member. So it's the board, our task force, and then the league has put some of my time into that role as well, because they felt it was a priority. But the other main priority was retaining municipal control. So your board member has 100% veto power to say, if we, let's say, another board member says, "Hey, this piece of property in Zion, we think it would be a good idea for the land bank to acquire it," your board member can say no, and we won't touch it.
Or the other way around.
Or the other way around, right. So the land, your board member can bring us properties, and the board will decide which properties it makes sense to acquire. And this is what I tell my municipalities that aren't quite ready to join or don't completely understand what the land bank is for. We can acquire properties that are not within our land bank board. So if there's a property in Winthrop Harbor that we think makes sense to acquire, we can, they do not need to be a member of the league, but it probably wouldn't make sense because we're going to be looking at the needs, the specific needs of our land bank members. Sure.
You keep referring to your board member. Is that in terms of one of the commissioners here and/or the mayor is a member of the land bank?
Yes, the mayor has been coming to all of our meetings, as has Ms. Bronson and Commissioner Fryerson.
In addition to that, Commissioner Holmes, there are several other mayors that also attend the meetings. Mayor Hucker from Beach Park, several of his staff members always attend Round Lake Beach. So there's a lot of, one of the good things that I've found right now is, in working as the mayor in Zion, there's a lot of cooperation between the mayors in this area, because we all realize that when there's an issue in our community, it just doesn't affect Zion, it affects these other communities too. So strategically, we're trying to address some of these issues together, whether it's the abandoned homes, the abandoned buildings, whether it's crimes, drugs, we understand these things impact all of us as well. So there's been a really strong strategic alliance with the mayors in different communities in Lake County to communicate and to come up with solutions to issues that we have.
Yeah, and as you're aware, it's very persuasive to some of these banks that we're going to visit to see three mayors from three separate municipalities that are coming together to address the same issue. And another thing is, many of our communities that are members have also applied for APP funding grants and been awarded them. So it does give us the opportunity to kind of pool some of our resources, if it makes sense, on a specific project.
I should have prefaced my question, I'm new to the council. Thank you.
Do any of our citizens have any questions for Mrs. Florp about the land bank? I know there was some question about it, it's been a while in the making, and it's taken, it's been taking some time to form, but it's getting to the point where we're going to be able to make some changes and some movement in all the communities here in the Northern Lake County area.
My question is, how much funding is the mayor paying for this program?
At this point, we've received three grants. We've received a grant to do a feasibility study, so that has already been paid.
Okay.
Before we even formed this, we thought it would make sense to do a study. We know it works in Illinois, we know there's three land banks, tell us if it'll work in Lake County. So that money has already been spent to do the study. Then we were awarded another CDVG funding grant, an amount of $5,000, and then an APP funding grant in the amount of $250,000.
Okay. Thank you.
Next, Mr. McDowell.
This is already coming from her. This is in his family?
From Hug, no, from Noel State.
Oh, this is.
The APP funding is from IDA, and the CDVG funding is from the county.
So her is not invested in this, but it's for how?
Not as of now, but that's a possibility. There's, we're talking about different partnerships with various organizations. The only other thing I think I forgot to add is that we're also pursuing this on the legislative side of things. We, the Lake County Municipal League, has a lobbyist who worked very actively for some land bank legislation to try to get things easier, to get some judgments declared. Right now, there's not a clear definition for judges to use when declaring property abandoned, and so we're trying to work to put together a definition that judges are comfortable using, so that they're more willing to do an abandonment declaration with clear set guidelines. So it did not move forward in the last session, but we're hoping to meet with some of the key representatives in the next couple months before they return, and keep working on that.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Pastor Williamson had a question.
Just for clarification, myself, so it's really the land, the Lake County Land Bank is somewhat, you're helping clean up the cities by cleaning up the property, but do you also get the property, so it becomes the land banks?
Yes.
To acquire it somehow?
Yes. So the land bank does acquire the property. So during the time where the land bank is being held or sold, or whatever's going to happen in that interim, the land bank authority does hold it. So it's that extra layer of protection from the municipality, the land bank itself can sue and be sued, and will be pursuing those legal actions of abandonment or foreclosure or however it makes sense to do. But yes, the land bank will be the one holding the property.
And after you kind of dissolve all that and it's clear, the property's clear, and you could then potentially remodel, rebuild, or sell the property, and would that be an asset for the Lake County Land Bank?
It would be, and every property would have its own agreement with the municipality. So if it's something where it's going, it's this property, it has the potential to earn a lot of income or revenue at that end point, then the Lake County Land Bank Authority has the ability to do a contract with each municipality to figure out where those funds go. But the land bank is not going to earn a profit, it just earns enough to sustain operations.
Like a nonprofit?
It's, yeah, it's an IGA, so it's an intergovernmental agency, but it's very, very similar.
Good question. Okay, so if the land bank gets the property, you're going to need somebody to, a contractor come in and fix it up and everything. Anyone know what you're talking about?
Oh, absolutely. We'll be putting, we're going to put together a big list.
Name it, name one.
Oh, we don't have it yet. We don't have any contractor bid list, but we're going to do a complete open bid, just like any municipality would do. We have to follow the same guidelines, and then we'll put together a pre-approved list of contractors after that bidding process is done. Does that make sense?
I guess, I think one of the great things about it, again, to reiterate, we were asked about this with a lot of the abandoned buildings in the area. I remember when I first came on the council, and I was so pleased that this concept was being formed, because I knew how much it could help us, and the land bank, again, could come in and buy these properties, put them back in the working order so they could go back on the tax rolls, of course, and also being able to sustain the land bank. So it's adding some value to our community, which we're looking to do. So thank you for all of the work that you're doing, for coming out and making a presentation to our citizens in our council.
Thank you, Mayor McKinney. Yeah, and thank you for all the questions and the support, and we really appreciate Zion being a member and being an active member. We appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Item number six, citizen comments. When you come up for citizen comments, you have three minutes for your comments, and in a lot of instances, we'll allow you to make your comments for three minutes. There won't be any rebuttal from the council right after your comments, but usually if there's some information that has to be gleaned about your issue that you're talking about, we'll find out what the issues are, get the whole story about it, and we'll address it either later in the council meeting or at the next council meeting.
And I'm sorry, Mayor, who's our timekeeper?
Chief Lewis is our timekeeper.
Thank you.
(inaudible).
All right. W.C. Brimner, Zion, Illinois.
Sure the mayor would remove my name from that list. Mayor has already requested a moment of silence for those victims of the Waukegan shootings. Thank you.
Felicia Lewis.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm a new resident in Zion, and, I'm a new resident in Zion, and I have reached out to my legislators and representatives, and they referred me to come over and talk to the council and try to meet with people to see if we can work out something with a reasonable accommodation. I'm working on the alley in the 1800 block of Gilead Avenue. I only have one entrance until my residence, which is in the alley, and this is totally tearing apart my vehicle modification, and there's no parking on the front street. So I want to know if there's anyone that I can sit and talk to, so they can relate to me on what steps I need to take to get something done, to take care of this situation.
Our director of public works is Ray Roberts, he's right over to your left
I met him.
In the green shirt.
I met him.
Also, our commissioner of public works is Commissioner McDowell, and I can speak on this, and Commissioner McDowell and Director Roberts can speak on it as well. I know there's a lot of issues with the streets. We've been trying to take care of those as quickly as we can based on our funding, and a lot of times when people come and talk about the issues on their streets, they're in the plans of being done, sometimes not as quickly as people would like them to be. But those, Commissioner McDowell and Director Roberts would be the people that you would talk to.
Thank you.
Welcome to Zion.
Thank you.
If we can be an assistance, don't hesitate to call us at City Hall. Connie Eklund.
Hello?
Hello, how are you?
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Connie Eklund, I'm a Zion resident, and I am the director of Abiding Love Food Pantry in Zion. I, my point for talking tonight is just about the legislation that's been passed regarding marijuana, and I would just like to give just my take on it, if you wouldn't mind listening to me. I want to say a few things about the pitfalls of marijuana. Our son Jeffrey was in high school when he was introduced to marijuana. He hid it from us, and we had no idea. He had a job, a good-paying job, and after high school, he decided to move into a place with his friends. At 19 years old, he moved out. One day, and he was still 19, he called and begged me to come get him. He said that he was dying. He could not eat, he could not sleep. Our journey to rehab started there. He tried to get clean on his own. He said he had smoked marijuana for several days at that time. He had also tried a few other things. He had tried to stop himself, he knew it was affecting him, but he was having terrible nightmares, hallucinations, and paranoia, among other things. He got help, and we thought he would be okay. After that time, he also tried some other drugs, as well as marijuana, still. He could not stop. That marijuana was the start into a short life of drugs. You see, our son died on November 1st in 2017 of a drug overdose. Marijuana was his gateway into the world of drugs. I don't consider it harmless, and neither should you.
Thank you for your comments. Julia Patterson.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening.
My name is Julia Patterson, I've been a resident in Zion for four years now. I had a city inspection on July 2nd. The city inspector came to my home. My home was super clean, because I have it all clean when I notice inspection, even when I don't notice inspection, but when I notice an inspection, it'd be super clean. Section 8 had came to my home on April and did my annual inspection, and I passed, sir. So on the 2nd, I had to be at work at 6 o'clock in the morning, I had my nephew there babysitting my children. So Mr. Warren came to my home and inspected. My landlord called me when I was on my, like, it was right before my lunch break, and told me that inspector is going to be a pain in your a. He said, "He's calling some people on your children." I'm like, "What do you mean, calling some people on my children? Like, my kids, I know they got a babysitter." He said, "No." He said, "Your carpet is filthy and your walls are dirty." So I get another call from my nephew, he said, "DCFS is at your house." So I asked my supervisor, I said, "Can I please leave?" She said, "Go take care of your kids." So I get to the home, and DCFS was at my home, and she informed me, she said she received a report, and if the report is how it was stating when she walked in, that they will have to remove my children and place them with, you know, family until I can get my house clean. So she did her walkthrough and everything, and then she left my children at the home. So I called the city, because I felt like if that gentleman called DCFS on me in regards to my house being so nasty, DCFS wouldn't have left my children in the home, because she just told me that if she see it the same way that the report states... So I called the city, because I felt like if that gentleman called DCFS on me in regards to my house being so nasty, DCFS wouldn't have left my children in the home, because she just told me that if she see it the same way that the report states, they will have to remove my children, not place them in foster care, but just put them with a family member until I can get it clean. So I called the city, because they left my children there. I called the city, because I wanted to speak to someone higher up, because I felt like he was wrong for calling DCFS on me, and DCFS left my children and everything. So I spoke to a lady by the name of Cheryl. She was a city clerk, and I told her everything. She said she didn't know that he even called DCFS. So you would think if the house was so nasty, that gentleman would've came back to the office and told them this house I just came to was so nasty, nobody knew. So she told me she was gonna inform the commissioner, as well as the director. So come Friday, I know Ms. Cheryl told me she was gonna inform them, but I just needed to come to the City Hall myself and put a complaint in. So I made a four-page complaint that I wrote in regards to this gentleman, Mr. Warren, the inspector. I spoke to the director. I asked if I could speak to the director, and they told me that I would have to make an appointment. So I waited there and filled out the four-page complaint on Mr. Warren. So the director came in, and he said, "I'll be willing to talk to you whenever you're ready." So I finished up with this, asked them to stamp and date it, as well as give me copies, and I spoke with the director. And the director informed me that, you know, that he don't take this lightly, but as of that Wednesday, they have changed the policy that no one single inspector can make a call to DCFS. So I went to my housing authority the very next day to let them know DCFS was called on me, you know, not trying to hide, I wanna let housing know. Housing informed me they already received the report. So this gentleman called Section 8 on me as well and gave the report. So Section 8 came out that very next day and did an inspection. They failed me, but they didn't fail me for poor housekeeping. They failed me for two light fixtures in each closet upstairs. The city inspector, he have a two-page letter, two pages of what he failed me on. Neither one have on the light fixtures. He told me I had, he put in his report, the reason I'm bringing it to the city council is because he lied. He put it in his report that I had old bait traps. I have Orkin paperwork that I just printed off from Orkin that I had them send me that states that they come once a week, and they've been coming since 2017, and I got the current from when before this gentleman came to my house on the 2nd. So no bait traps in my home is old. I have also the pictures that he took. Now, he took the pictures and sent them to DCFS, and the pictures look very bad, but the way he took the pictures, he took the pictures as if my children is using a bathroom in a basement. It floods sometimes downstairs in the basement and stuff, and my landlord, when we do finally go down there and see that it's flooded, I call my landlord, and he gets on it right away. But we really don't be in a basement down there like that. But the way the gentleman took the pictures and stuff, he made it seem like to DCFS that we're using the shower downstairs. So I have his pictures that he took, you know, to show you guys I'm not trying to hide nothing that he took, as well as the pictures that I took to show that this gentleman, he, I don't know what was going on with him, probably personally, but he came and brought it in, and to get DCFS called on you, it disrupted my whole house. So I now, I even brought my checks up to show that I was working, sir. But now to work for eight hours, like, to work an eight-hour shift, I can't do, sir, because I can't take a chance of leaving my kids with a babysitter, because children tend to act differently when they with a babysitter than when the parents is at home. So when I'm at home, my house never be messed up, because, you know, y'all play outside, not in the house. But if I leave them with a babysitter, and that's how it was, but everybody knew about my inspection, you know, my nephew and the children, about my inspection. So that's why it was confusing to me that DCFS was called, because I knew my house was clean, but the way he took the pictures, he took the pictures of the basements and stuff, of the storage room, where I have a storage room from when my twins was five years old, and it's a crib, and it's taken apart, though. He took a picture of that, where these, like, right up in there, the white squares that come down. It's like something in the basement. I don't know if it's a raccoon or what, but it's knocking those white things down. And then in the back room, where we got power wheels and stuff, and we have the crib, it knocked those squares down, so it got, like, yellow insulation and stuff on the floor. But he took pictures of it and sent it to DCFS, like my children is sleeping in the crib. He didn't take a picture of, like, the rooms and stuff. He only took a picture of the little stains on the floor, instead of taking a picture of the whole room. Like, if my house was real dirty, you would think he'd take a picture of the whole room and show that the house is, like, nasty. He only took a picture of, like, the stains and stuff. But then the pictures that look really disgusting is the pictures that's downstairs in the basement. But he knew my children wasn't using that bathroom in that basement. We don't even go in there.
More look into this. Thank you for bringing us to City Council.
And what is your address?
3307 Emes Avenue, Zion, Illinois. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Clyde McMonmore.
But even mayor, I say council members, I have a couple of things. First of all, I want to parrot on that young lady. If we make a false report to the police, we can get arrested for filing a false report. Instead of taking, with your sister, what they said, they just stopped calling DCFS. That was a false report, because DCFS came out and spoke with this lady and found nothing to do with that. So I think some more should be done to that gentleman that's coming over there and doing that, you know. But that wasn't my purpose. I'm here, I'm here because I just wanted to escalate and parrot your sister, because I don't want y'all to take it lightly. You know, when you call, when they call DCFS, they call it, I mean, you know, on these single women, that's kind of bad on their record, and it don't go away, even though they find out there's not nothing to prove, but it don't go away. It's still on the record, you know, on some, on this housing inspection. You know, I've never been with it anyway. But anyway, this village, Zion, the city, can't do it unless we come together. You know, and we got some good things happening. On August 24th, we got this biggest block party we gonna have here in Zion. And we inviting all y'all to be there, and we gonna have some fun, and guess what? I don't care if you're white, black, Mexican, whatever. We gonna have some fun, because we got people that own businesses that want to support this event. Our kids can't go back to school unless they properly write. So we gonna make sure they have some school supplies. I got the school district involved, we'll have some jumping houses over there. We gonna feed them for free, we'll give them some juice if it's hot. We got some popsicles coming. Oh, man, we gonna have a ball. So I'm asking that all y'all just stop by from 2:00 to 6:00 up at Salem Food. I understand, I ain't see it in the report here. I was looking for that on the agenda, that we had that street closed. But I understand, I heard that it might be closed anyway. Right there on Salem and Gally, you know, the little corner there. We want that, you know, closed off. I'm just saying that we can't do this alone. We asking everybody come out and shake some hands. Y'all politicians, come out, shake hands, kiss babies, you know. Y'all know how to do it, but we got, we got some good things going on, mayor, and we can only do it if our city come together. You know, a lot didn't happen this weekend. I was pretty, I was pretty depressed about this weekend. Thirty-three people, it's too much hate. It's too much hate. I ain't gotta argue around here no more. Y'all know who I am. You know what I'm saying? I hear you, but I ain't gotta argue around here no more. I'm trying to come together and make our city a home, man. It's our village. I live here, and I ain't going nowhere. Thank y'all for letting me speak.
Thank you. Carl Williamson.
Council Mayor. This is regarding number 10F, the passing an ordinance prohibiting the sale and dispensing craft-growing of marijuana within the city of Zion. I probably have more questions than I do comments about it. However, I guess this is what you could maybe take these questions with you. I wonder how much research was done with regarding the levels of THC in marijuana that would be sold in the city of Zion, and how that would affect our youth and the young people that might get access to that. I know I've read some, a little bit, since I decided that I heard that this was on the docket. I did do a little conversation or research about THC and how it does affect people, and scientifically, they have developed that, so its very potency is probably like 150% more than it was in the past, in its natural state. But also, I wondered, too, you can consider this question. How would that affect, you know, crime and police? I know we're looking, I know we're low on, probably, I know we want to keep the police force up, and that has been an issue in the past couple of years. And I wondered that you, my guess is you'll be hiring more police officers to be on the field or more detectives or whoever's needing to solve those issues in the city of Zion. So also, I do have another issue, like illegally, I think there's dispensaries that are around the city that, I see cars pulling up on my block all the time, and it's regular, very regular. I wish I could take a picture of everyone and send it to you guys, but I don't feel safe doing that. But there's things like that are happening on our block. And so I've been on that block for 10 years, and I like being there. But I do see that they're selling something, because it's a pattern, and it's been going on since I've been there. So thank you very much for your ears and consideration of my comments. Thank you.
Ken Philbin.
No, I, too, would like to address 10F on this, about the ordinance for selling marijuana. Colorado has really been the guinea pig state for this since 2014, and so after five years, we can look at this colorful state and determine whether or not it's a good idea. The big selling point about legalized marijuana, which the federal government still considers illegal, has it worked? Marijuana sales accounts for only 1.8% of the state's revenue, while the cost to law enforcement, healthcare treatment, and addiction recovery will certainly surpass the $160 million it generates. Here's something you may not know, and this is what Carl was referring to. Since 1970, the potency of THC, the chemical that gets you high, is at least threefold greater. It has moved from 4% to 12%. It has gone from the equivalent, if you will, of drinking a beer to drinking a glass of wine. And now they're also able to further process it into gummy bears and pills and suppositories and whatever else you want, to a point where it's 95% potent. So it'd be like drinking Jack Daniels. We don't know the health risks of this new potent marijuana. The joint that Bill Clinton didn't inhale is nothing compared to what's available today. They have linked marijuana use to paranoia, schizophrenia, and violent outbursts. It has been especially harmful to young people under 25, whose brains are not fully developed yet. And if you've got a young person, you know it's not developed. But, and school funding was another selling point for the legalization. And after promising funding for the schools, Superintendent Harry Bull of the Cherry Creek Schools, one of the largest districts in the state, said, "So far, the only thing that legalization of marijuana has brought to our schools has been more marijuana." Since legalizing marijuana, Colorado's youth rate is the highest, use rate is the highest in the nation, 74% higher than the national average. And that's according to the Rocky Mountain High Intensity Drug Traffic Report. Certainly marijuana use on college campuses has been a disaster, too. College students with access to recreational cannabis, on average, earn worse grades and fail classes at a much higher rate. Another selling point of this legalizing marijuana was to reduce incarceration rates among minority communities, but legalizing marijuana has actually had the opposite effect. According to the Colorado Department of Public Safety, arrests in Colorado of black and Latino youth for marijuana possession have increased 58% and 29%, respectively, after legalization. This means black and Latino youth are being arrested more for marijuana possession after it became legal. Furthermore... Oh, my goodness. I wrote this down so I could get through it. But anyway, it's a horrible idea. And anyway, all this information is available on the web. You can look it up. And my understanding is, Mayor, that we have until January 1st to get some legislation, get some ordinances put in place. Otherwise, it's gonna take a referendum to make any major changes. And so I would like to encourage y'all to do something about it, like, now.
Thank you, Pastor Philbin.
Sir, would you be willing to share with the council a copy of that?
Yes, sure.
I do do that, but I'd like to get it directly from him. Thank you. Give that to, it's replicated for everybody. Thank you.
Ronald Showell, Mr. Showell? You're on our list for citizens' comments.
Well, I don't want to prepare for anything, but I've met with me at 1:00. Ronald Showell, 3603 Portland Drive. Next time I'll probably have a comment. I'm just listening today.
Thank you. I am having a difficult time reading this last name. Or was that already, was that Mandy? All right. That was Mandy Florip with the Lake County Municipal League, who has already given us a special presentation, so we don't have to go through our citizens' comments. Item number seven, consent agenda.
Approval of minutes of a regular meeting held on July 16th, 2019, at 7:00 p.m. Approval but not released of closed session minutes of a meeting held on July 16th, 2019, at 8:18 p.m. Bills, vouchers 132613 through 132706, drawn on Huntington National Bank, N.A. Total $978,034.09.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda. Is there a second?
I'll second it with one amendment. Correction to the minutes from the meeting of July 16th. On page four, the record of the vote on the budget approval for fiscal year 2018-2019, it incorrectly says that it was moved by Commissioner McDowell and seconded by Commissioner McDowell. That should be corrected to seconded by Commissioner Fisher.
Good catch. Couldn't have done that, could I?
No, I think that would be, yeah, double jeopardy.
Is there a motion to approve with the adjustment, with the correction?
I have a question, in terms of the consent agenda. Are the two items, A and B, typically under one bulleted item? Because what if I wanted to vote against and/or for, either/or? I mean, could they be separated out, or is that just how they, I mean, it's been done to make a motion to separate it? Like that, but I would have to invoke yes or no for the entire consent agenda, is my point. And if I disagree on either or...
I could give an opinion about it. I think that when we back consent agenda is that we're agreeing to pay these bills, and we're agreeing to approve the minutes. So if you wanted to bring up some issues with the consent agenda after it's been moved and seconded, then you could ask some questions about the minutes or the...
Or about the billing and what's in the sense.
You can bypass it. You can very easily bypass it. It happens often. These are oftentimes things that are done by maybe the chair.
Not yourself out.
These are oftentimes things that are done routinely, such as minutes and bills. So it is standard that municipalities have a tax and have consent agenda for minutes and bills. If you want it extracted, you can ask to have it extracted. You can make a motion to approve both items, or you can make a motion to have one of them removed, and then essentially just be taking two separate votes. It wouldn't be a consent agenda, it's like two things. You get a third thing, it'd be a little different. But in your case, if you're asking to have it
Separated.
Separated, and you would ask for a motion to separate it. Second it.
So ask questions, like, if you go through the bills, and you have a question about the bills, you can ask that question.
I just want to vote on this separately. Any questions, I would like to have them separated.
Well, we already have a motion and a second on the table.
Yep, I understand that.
So is it your intent to have that separated as a super meeting? Motion to split the question?
Going forward.
So for tonight, there is no motion. Just want to make sure.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Sorry for...
No, no problem. Speak as much as you'd like.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Motion carries?
Well, we haven't had a vote yet, sir.
Okay. All in favor?
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Same.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye.
Agenda item eight, Consider Passing Resolutions as Follows. A, Temporary Road Closure Jubilee Days Per Lieutenant Vilarde.
Honorable Mayor and Commissioners, expect to request the city council authorize and approve a resolution to close our Sherwood Road Jubilee Days Parade on Monday, September 2nd, 2019. This resolution is necessary for Sherwood Road to stay highway. The specifics of the road closure are as follows. Sherwood Road South, 21st Street, 31st Street, on Monday, September 2nd, from 12:00 PM.
Is there a motion? Make a motion to approve the temporary road closure for Jubilee Days per Lieutenant Vilarde. Any discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye.
Item 8B, Supplemental Resolution for Improvement Under the Illinois Highway Code, MFT Funds for 2019 Alley Road Program Per Director Roberts.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor. What's your... Council has approved a resolution for the improvement under Illinois Highway Code for $247,000 at the June 4 council meeting. A tax to the MFT supplemental resolution for $85,000. The increase in funding request is due to the lowest bid received was $425,000. Total MFT expenditure would be $332,000 and $140,000 from the street and bridge fund. Staff requests and recommends approving the supplemental resolution for the expenditure of $85,000 from the MFT fund.
I'll make a motion that we approve this extension on the MFT funds. Second. Is there a discussion? I just have a question, something that Director Robinson and I talked about before, if I think it's worth noting, is you made an estimate about how much this would end up costing, but the bids came in a lot higher, and do you have a reason for that? I mean, why, why do you think the bids came in so high?
I believe for two reasons. The first reason is we're relatively late in the process of the season for construction, and that is due to our, our budget approvals were done in May or later. We didn't get the MFT approved this year until... Typically, you get better prices if you're out the bid in February, March for the construction of that year. The second reason, I believe, is because of the capital improvement fund. These companies out there in the state have given out a bunch of money to the municipalities, and prices across the board, and I've talked to other municipalities, it's increased significantly.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye.
Item number nine, A, Authorizing Execution of a License Agreement Buying Between the City of Zion and Carmel House Urban Zion LP For Use Of A City-Owned Parking Lot Adjacent To Parkway at 2815 Elisha Avenue Per Director Ianson.
Thank you, Your Honor. 2011, 2013 Elisha is the north side of Carmel House. We've been using parking there for years. Three years ago, we decided to put a license agreement together to protect both parties. This is a renewal of that license for another three years.
Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second. Is there any discussion? I, I do have a question. Is it, is it possible to put in this agreement in the future, no golf playing on that property as we've had a problem with one of their residents hitting golf balls?
I thought you mentioned that.
It's in there? Probably overlooked. All right. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye.
Item number nine, B, Authorizing Execution of the Second Amendment to the Intergovernmental Agreement for the Payment of Golf Fees. The Shepherd's Crook Golf Court between the Zion Park District and the City of Zion Per Administrator Nabel.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. We were approached by the Zion Park District. We currently have an agreement with them that we get a, I think it's a quarter per round of golf that's played out of Shepherd's Crook Department and a referendum agreement going way back. For administratively, it's kind of a pain for them to calculate that every year, go through their records, calculate out the round, what's included, what's excluded. So they approached us and just asked if we would be willing to amend the agreement, just accept a flat amount annually, and just level it out. So what we did, we took the five-year average of what we've received as part of that agreement, and just put, put it in here as a flat amount of $18,000. It's fine with me, it's fine with them. We use those funds for festivities, Jubilee Days, fireworks, things like that, as written in the agreement, so it's not impacting our operational budget and the general fund. It's just ones that go for those events, and it's just easier on both parties, so I would recommend we approve the amendment that's presented.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there discussion?
Question. So does this take into account any price hikes that the golf course might implement later, or what's the plan for it? This just stays flat?
It, it's just a flat amount. Even if there were price hikes, the amount that was in there was still a quarter per round, so we wouldn't have seen any better than that anyway.
Okay. So we only get more if they increase traffic, but other than that?
Right.
And it's been standing for the last five years or so?
Correct. Yeah. Maybe $750,000 over down, not major swings.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye.
Item nine, C, Authorizing Execution of an Intergovernmental Agreement Buying Between the City of Zion and Zion Park District For The Purpose Of Describing The Terms And Conditions On Which The City Shall Provide Police Training Services To Zion Park District's Police Officers Per Administrator Nabel.
Thank you again, Mayor Commissioners. The Zion Police Department does a lot of in-house training, as well as additional training for our officers, and in the spirit of cooperation, the Zion Park District officers asked if they'd be willing to participate in that, since we're already putting on those services, rather than basically double-dipping into training them separately from us, if we're already, if we're incurring the cost. Again, for the benefit of the community as a whole, we thought this was a good idea to, to make some redundancies, and we just asked that they put, name us as additional insurance and liability insurance, which they did not have to offer, so I would recommend setting those training opportunities to their officers as we do it.
Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second. Motion passed. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye.
Item number 10, Discussion Authorization Approval, A, Consider Filling One Police Lieutenant Vacancy And Two Police Sergeant Vacancies And Requesting The Names Of The Next Qualified Candidates From The Board Of Fire Police Commission From The Eligibility List Per Chief Henderson/Lieutenant Vilarde.
Honorable Mayor Commissioners, I expect to request the city council authorize the motion for the next eligible candidate from the police lieutenant's list, recently finalized by the Zion Board of Fire Police Commission. This request could fulfill the vacancy created by retirement Lieutenant Tim Bartlett, March 1st, 2019. The department was unable to fill this vacancy and will now lose the police lieutenant's list that expired. Zion Board of Fire Police Commission's complete testament certified new list on July 11, 2019. Since Lieutenant Bartlett's retirement, we have been filling the lieutenant's vacancy, a salary exempt position as sergeant, an hourly non-exempt employee. This has required us to pay overtime. Filling this position will be temporary, will remove that obligation. The motion of one sergeant to the rank of lieutenant, the retirement of Sergeant Rick Brown on August 7, 2019, as a result of the two vacancies in our sergeant. I hereby request the city council authorize the motion of the next two eligible candidates from the police sergeant list compiled by the Zion Board of Fire Police Commissioners. The police sergeant's list at current does not expire on February 17, 2020. Police department has eight sergeants, each to his assigned shifts and responsibilities. We do not fill these vacancies, will be required to fill the vacant position by paying overtime to other sergeants. So leaving this vacancy will remove that obligation.
Is there a motion?
I make a motion to consider filling one police lieutenant vacancy and two police sergeant vacancies.
Second. Is there discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye.
Item 10, B, Consider Proposal From Dan Showman Inc. And Strategic Partnership Alliance, LTV Corps For Legislation Assistance Administrator Nabel.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. You have a note before you as well as a proposal from Dan Showman and Strategic Partnership Alliance Limited. I won't go through and read all of that again, but I'll just get some of the highlights. Recently, the capital funding bill from the state did not have us receiving any funding for capital projects, which we are sorely in need of. This reflects kind of a long-time issue that we, I believe that we had of being underrepresented in Springfield, and underrepresented and been really, basically taking advantage of our relationships that we made, build or have. We've developed a lot of good relationships over the years, but getting kind of that push over the finish line on a lot of these things, whether it be capital funding, grants, representation in legislation, getting a voice out in Springfield, it's been something that we've been lacking and needing to address. So the mayor and myself actually met with representatives from Dan Showman to talk about all of the, all the things we have in the fire, for lack of a better term, with the Methodist cultivation center, the nuclear spent fuel rods, capital bill funding, there's a whole list in there, items. And they put together a proposal, they have it for you, for, it was $4,000 a month for the first two months, and then $3,000 a month for the next seven, to use their relationships, use their connections that they've, basically, that this is what they do to keep us surprised of issues in Springfield, and also make sure that we're represented there, and to help them whatever way they can, to kind of get some closure on these things, and push over the finish line of things that we've brought, basically as far as we can without knowing further how to proceed. So you have a proposal before you. Approval of this would require a budget amendment, it's not a budget that I initially, so approving this will institute a budget amendment as well for this fiscal year, $26,000. We do have a 30-day out in there, if, if we determine that this is not a relationship we want to continue, but I think that we'll, we'll be able to see some results relatively soon, with veto session in Springfield, trying to get some capital funding on, during that from both Senator Bush and Representative Mason, and then just seeing motion, because we have a lot of things that are very time-sensitive right now, I mean, we, we would need to have them jump off right away, and we would know relatively quickly that they're basically going to bat for us to do their work. So I would recommend the, the proposal that we have here, and then continue to revisit this going forward for potential extension down the road.
I make the motion to approve the proposal from Dan Showman and Strategic Partnership Alliance.
Second.
A budget amendment of one year?
It's a, it's a, because our, our fiscal year runs through April 30, if this contract actually goes a couple of months beyond that, so the budget amendment for the current fiscal year would actually be $26,000, and then for next fiscal year's budget, we would have $6,000 for the remainder of the contract that would be part of that, if we chose to run out of the contract.
I see.
I've got some, some questions. And, and for questions for Director Nabel, or Mr. Showman is here as well. If there, if you'd like to step up to the mic and with any questions, our commissioner, staff, council can ask it. Questions? David, what, what's our budget deficit with this year? We budgeted it, we have a deficit budget. What is that deficit?
The, the deficit budget is, we have a $400,000 surplus budget, but that was with a long, $2 million transfer from the water fund. So without that transfer, we're looking at about $1.6 million.
And where, where would you expect to find the funds in this deficit budget that we have?
So of that $400,000 that we talked about, we talked about potentially either transferring less from the water fund, paying additional towards the pension funds, or basically carrying that over. So 26, I mean, 26,000 of this 400, of that 400,000 will go towards this. Basically, the, the way I'm looking at this is, we're going to be looking at this on our return on investment basis. So if we are able to get $500,000 of capital funds that we currently do not have access to, obviously that, that $26,000 is going to be a return that parrots alleys issues that we would have to spend later anyway. Same thing on the, the medical marijuana cultivation, so if we push that over, that would be a significant return. So we'll know, that's what I was talking about, we'll know relatively, relatively short period of time, this fiscal year probably, whether this is a successful investment, and it could bear significant fruit to dig us out of this hole in the future.
I guess I want to just say this to everybody that's here. This is just something that's coming to the council, and we haven't discussed it among ourselves at all. So I'm asking questions because it was just presented to us, and I've got questions about it. I'm leaning towards not being in favor of it right now, but, I mean, as we discuss this, I might change my mind. So that's...
So...
I've had, I've got a few more questions too.
Go ahead.
Mayor McKinney, I, I supported you in your run for mayor, and one of the reasons is because I thought you would be a really good representation for the city in Springfield with our state reps and, and our state senator, and I still believe that. And I think you really could do the things that are listed here probably better than a lobbyist, if you don't mind me saying that. And, and the reason I say it is because I have spoken to our state senators, our state senator and reps in the past, and one of the things that they said is that a visit from one elected official means a lot more than a visit from a paid lobbyist. And I guess I just think, we, we have the resources in our council, and David, and actually Son Alita, to do this very thing. So I'm, I'm not inclined to go in favor of it because of those things.
So for me personally, I'm in favor of it because you need to formalize your voice at the table, and a lobbyist allows us to do that. I understand that it is a significant amount of money, but I agree with Administrator Nabel, it's an investment for something down the line. A couple of things that I like about it are the 30-day out, the fact that we get the monthly reports that show us what progress has been made, so we don't have to expend the entire $26,000 if it's not moving in our favor. And for the mayor, I mean, my understanding is you will be partnering with them and making those appearances that's necessary. But the, the other thing is, when you're not in Springfield and you don't navigate those waters, you don't know what you don't know. So as well as it's powerful for him to get there and show up, sometimes you need people that have a little bit more experience and a little bit more depth. So that's, that's my opinion, that's why I'm voting in favor of it.
I think that's well said. And I echo that sentiment.
That, that's what, in, in my discussions with Mayor McKinney about this, we just feel we need a, we need a consistent strategy, because right now, it's, we're, we're not able to get that kind of focus. And it doesn't eliminate personal interactions with Senator Bush or Representative Mason, because I have those relationships also. But we do need somebody who knows how Springfield works, and is able to alert us when, when we need to step in, and we, we need to have those conversations. Because none of us here, well, Commissioner Fryerson, Commissioner Holmes, and myself, we all work full-time jobs, aside from what we're doing here. So it's very difficult for, for us to keep track of what's going on at high... So it's very difficult for us to keep track of what's going on at other levels of government. That's why we need somebody like Mr. Showman here to help guide us. And I think for the amount of money that's being asked, actually, it's a, it's a very, very reasonable compared to the amount of work that we're asking them to do. I mean, you know, basically $3,000 a month, I mean, that's, that's not that much when it comes right down to it.
So I don't want to, I guess I don't want to minimize the amount, so I'm not sure what the going rate is for lobbyists, honestly. I don't know.
I'm sure you could pay a lot more than that.
Allow us to finish this before there's comment.
And if Mr. Showman could give us some background on his experience and what he can bring to the table, I'd appreciate that.
Sure.
Thank you Commissioners and thank you Mayor and thank you David. My name is Dan Showman. I have been working in the state capitol for 30 years, it'll be 30 years in September, in a variety of capacities, legislative, executive, cabinet agencies for the governor. I worked for the senate president for five years and that was where I met President Obama and I managed three of his campaigns for state senator, congress, and US senator. I live in Chicago, but I live in Springfield for 93 days a year. We represent several municipalities. I'm going to give you an example. This year, the village of Richthood Park, which has 12,000 residents, we were able to obtain $1.8 million in capital funding for Richthood Park, for roads, stormwater improvements, and a variety of other projects. A lot of municipalities got left out of the capital bill. It wasn't necessarily because there was an issue, but it was because there was not enough time to finalize, to finalize plans, so there is a real good opportunity now, before the veto session, to get projects inserted. So I think you'd see a pretty good quick response, Commissioner, in terms of results, because the veto session is in October and by then, you'll see that the, that the city will be able to get some funding for some infrastructure projects.
I guess I'm also thinking that we actually already have lobbyists in Springfield called our state senator and our state representative.
Correct.
And they're the ones that, I mean, I see some of the things that you want to do, develop a list of capital requests, well, that's going to come from us anyway. Why can't we just give that directly to our state senator and our representative?
Well, we did, we did, I understand that the city did, but it gets, they have a pile this big and if it ends up at the bottom of the pile, so what we do is, we have to meet with various staff of the legislature and the governor to make sure that the implementation is final. So there's, so there's a lot of backroom, things that the legislators don't have enough time, they represent multiple towns and they admit, we're there to help them get this done because of our expertise and I've worked on a number of capital bills, so that's what we're there for.
How many other Lake County municipalities do you represent?
None.
None?
None. But I have done work for Cary and you could use them as a reference, the mayor, and he would give you a good reference. But not, that was, not for a year and a half.
I guess if I would add anything, Commissioner McDowell, I appreciate your comments about the reasons you voted for me, and we've looked at this long and hard, this is something that hasn't been done in the city. I do know one thing, and I'll talk about this in department commentary, about some of the strides we've made in meeting with people that want to come here and do business in Zion, the different things we've been looking at, but I've also got to tell you that this was set in motion, or the discussion was set in motion, maybe over a year and a half ago with former Mayor Hill, just about some of the things that we need to do in terms of doing a better job of connecting to the state, yes, from what I understand. Mayor Hill didn't spend time in Springfield. I have the time to do that and I also, as well as my name is known in some parts of Illinois, this whole political game is new to me as well.
Sometimes a better thing.
Yeah. But I also, yes, absolutely. But I also know that in terms of being able to move things forward with how we, what we need to do to make the city financially stable, we need help with it. And it's going to take these kind of introductions that we have, not only from Mr. Showman's group, but also one of the reasons, one of the reasons we had a change in our legal council was the same reason with their reaches into state legislatures, senators, people that could work for us behind the scenes. And I'm willing to spend the time, and I will spend the time, in Springfield to be introduced to these people, but I've also been in rooms where I can go in and introduce myself and people will like say, well, who the hell is he? Excuse my French.
The mayor of Zion.
Yeah. I say that very proudly, but one of the questions that we've asked and we've talked about repeatedly, is this something that we can afford not to do? This is what we've done the same way for so many years, that we haven't reached out and asked for this kind of help. And in hearing the commissioners talk about it tonight, as you said, we don't, we rarely ever discuss these things off the books, where people think that decisions are made before the council comes to order, that is not true. We have discussions about these things and this is one of the things that I've been in favor for, because I understand doing the same things the same way as we've done for so many years is kind of the definition of insanity. We haven't had any help. I've spent how much time talking to Senator Bush, Joyce Mason, the capital bill, we had our capital refunding quest in with state rep Mason, and when we met with her two and a half, three weeks ago, one of the questions, comments that she made to us is, even though she received our capital funding request, she didn't get it. One of her aides failed to get it to her until she was down there for a couple of days. So we're always, we're playing catch-up then, and that's what we're continuing to do. I can't tell you how many discussions, just hold up. This is a council discussion, Mr. McNamara, I appreciate your concern, but this is a council discussion. When you have comments to make, we listen to you, so please listen to us. Just hold up. In any event, as I was saying, we, we've talked about this, is this something that we can afford not to do? And I'm in the, I'm in the agreement with the other commissioners, that this is something that we need to move on and try to make some new roads in the Springfield. So with that, is there a motion?
Yes, there's a motion and a second on the table to approve. We've had the discussion, clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
No offense to you, but I have a lot of faith in you and our staff, so for that, for those reasons, I'm voting no.
I appreciate that.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye.
Item 10C, Consider Proposal for Municipal Funding Solutions, L S C, for capital leases per Administrator Nabel.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. As part of the budget that was approved last meeting, we had funds budgeted in our capital fund as well as our water sewer fund for replacement of some equipment that is beyond our need of replacement. So what we could be done in the past is we've gone with this group, our group, municipal funding solutions for capital lease. We try and, we try and have basically a cycle of lease payments where one drop, when it drops off, we can enter a new one for another segment of our equipment, so we constantly get a location to start addressing some of our old capital that wasn't addressed for quite a long time prior. So there's two proposals here. The first one is for a five-year lease totaling $450,000 for the purchase of five police squads. Two of those are actually replacements from individuals who totaled our police squads in accidents or other encounters that we need to get replaced. So that also includes the outfitting of the lights and equipment, a front-end loader and then an asphalt hot box, which basically allows us to do more in-house patching of, basically keeping material hot, which will help us, the budget stretch a lot further for patching, as we all know. The second item is actually a seven-year lease for $354,000 for the purchase of a vector truck for cleaning and jetting of water, sewer, and storm lines. So as I said, these are, the payments are budgeted, the water fund and the capital fund respectively. These are just proposals, there's no guarantee of financing on these, but basically, we have to get approval from council to direct them to go forward, complete all the paperwork, do the lease agreement, which we will then bring back at the August 20th council meeting.
Is there a motion?
I'll move to approve these two proposals for leasing of capital equipment as included in the budget approved at the July 16th, 2019 council meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Item 10D, Tabulation of Bids, 2019 Alley Road Program for Director Roberts.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor Commissioners. July 30th, 2019, the city held a bid opening for the 2019 Alley Road Program for the following results. Chicago Land Paving Contractors, $425,000. Payton and Dolan Inc., $573,315.33. M&amp;J Asphalt Paving Company, $587,149.99. Staff request and recommends awarding the project to the lowest responsible bidder, Chicago Land Paving Contractors contractors team from Lake Zurich, Illinois, in the amount of $425,000. Funding for this project has been budgeted from the Motor Fuel Tax Fund and the Street and Bridge Fund. Copies of the bid tabs are unfiled with the city clerk and the public office office.
I'll make a motion that we accept this recommendation for the alley road program.
Second.
Is there discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Item 10E, Tabulation of Bids, 2019 Sidewalks, Projects for Director Roberts.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor Fisher. A tax for the bids for the 2019 sidewalk replacement program. The project is funded through the Street and Bridge Fund, $25,000, and a grant with community development blocks around, $80,000. Staff request and recommends awarding this project to the lowest responsible bidder with this urban concrete from Mungol, in the amount of $80,757.53.
I'll make a motion that we approve this recommendation for the 2019 sidewalk program.
Second.
Is there discussion?
Question in the variance, like, do you have any insight as to why such a large degree of variance between the bids?
Some of these contractors, they throw in a bid, they know they're busy, so they throw in a high bid and they get lucky. And if they get lucky, then they're, you know, they're getting a higher bid on.
And is this from a pre-approved list of?
This is through a list from, from the building department, to the city clerk, and also Lake County provided a list of contractors also. Being this is funded through the county and HUD, we have to do, they're, they're the final actually approval on the contract itself, so we'll take a look at all the bidders also.
Do we know how often that list is updated?
No, I don't.
And do we know if minority business owners are part of that?
I'm assuming they're within there, it gets put out there, anybody, it's advertised just like the regular state bid, local bids.
Gotcha.
So it's put in the paper, put on the websites, so it's, it plus with whoever is on our list will get, receive.
So is there any other scoring besides just the bid price?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion or questions? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. The next couple of items, 10F and 10G, are items that are for discussion, but no action will be taking on, taking on them this evening. This discussion, 10F, brought up by Commissioner McDowell, discussion regarding the City of Zion passing an ordinance prohibiting the sale, dispensing, and craft growing of marijuana within the City of Zion per Commissioner McDowell.
Thank you, floor is yours. I just wanted to bring this up for discussion, for possible consideration of creating an ordinance that prohibits the dispensing and cultivation of marijuana. I would make one exception to that, since we've already approved the Flat Rock Corporation for the growing of medical marijuana. I think that might be expanded to recreational, but since that was done with previous councils, I'm not going to object to that. But I think, other than the Flat Rock Corporation, I think we should consider an ordinance that prohibits the distribution and cultivation of marijuana in the city limits of Zion. So I've just got a few things to share with the council for your consideration, and I guess what I'd like to see at the end of it, is that we decide at our next meeting that we're going to put an ordinance on the agenda to do just that, to prohibit the dispensing and cultivation of marijuana within the city limits, with that one exception. That's kind of what I'm thinking. So there are only 11 states now, Illinois, I believe, is the 11th, that allow for the recreational use or that will allow for the recreational use of marijuana. Colorado has been the longest state, or the state that has had that law the longest. So it's not comparing apples to apples, because Colorado is a different state than Illinois, Zion is a different city than Denver, but we do get some trends coming out of the state of Colorado that I think are worth our consideration. So I've done some research on this topic and questions were asked by researchers in Colorado. This study comes from the School of Public Affairs in Colorado, funded by the University of Denver, I believe. And the question was asked was, do marijuana dispensaries increase neighborhood crime? And you can read the study for yourself, I'll gladly provide you a copy with this, but the answer overwhelmingly is yes, it does increase crime rates, according to their research, anywhere between 26 and 1,452% increase in crime rates. What happens to neighborhoods with marijuana dispensaries? There's good news and bad news with that. The good news is that it increases housing values in neighborhoods that have dispensaries. The bad news side of that is that it really doesn't help actual residents, people who are homeowners, it would help businesses that go into those neighborhoods to dispense marijuana. And the downside of it is that because property values increase, and that's for the competition for the retail space, for the sale of marijuana, home values also increased, but taxes increased along with those home values, so that was the negative side of that. It also has, according to these studies, that I'm flipping through some of these studies and I'll give you a copy of this. According to these studies, it has a detrimental effect specifically on low-income neighborhoods, because some of our surrounding communities, like Libertyville, I think is considering an ordinance like this. Naperville has passed an ordinance like this, or will, if they haven't yet. And then the city of Morton, Illinois, has passed an ordinance like this. I think communities like ours that are really looking for retailers to come will be attracted to this type of a business because it will bring in tax money, but I think that the downside of it is, is not worth the upside because of the things that I stated. So that's kind of what I found out. I do have a short video that I'd like to show I, I do have a short video that I'd like to show the council that kind of summarizes some of the things that I'm saying, if that's okay, Mayor.
Hey, look, if, if you guys are anything like we, you have found it harder and harder to turn around recently without seeing words like free-range, farm-to-table, organically-produced, especially here in Colorado. Now, as we've become more conscientious of the way that we eat in recent years, these once unfamiliar words have worked their way into our daily lexicon. When we started to pay more attention to the way that the food we were eating interacted with our bodies and with the earth, the food industry had to listen, and the results have been really powerful. Words like all-natural and, and homegrown are not just being used in our diets, there's this whole new industry using this language now. Now, those of you out there from states like Washington and Oregon, and of course, my fellow Coloradans, y'all know what I'm talking about. It's weed. An industry that taxed the sale of about $6 billion worth of product in 2016. So what if I would have proposed to you that some of what you think you know about this legalized marijuana thing could be wrong? Listen, I get it, talking about issues with legal weed is a pretty quick way to get uninvited from the cool kids' table. I, I, I know that better than most, but I intend to do it anyway. First, before I get started, let me be perfectly clear about one thing. My fight is not against the casual adult use of marijuana, I don't care about that. What I care deeply about is this new industry that is working to convince us that we are consuming something natural while fixing social ills when we aren't. So let's start with a little bit of weed 101. Cannabis is a plant that grows naturally and has been used within textiles and even traditional Chinese medicine for thousands of years. Genesis 1112 even tells us that I have given you all of the seed-bearing plants and herbs to use. It's, it's the microphone, it's got a TV preacher sort of thing. Now cannabis is made up of hundreds of different chemicals, but, but two of those chemicals are by far the most interesting, that's CBD and THC. So CBD is where almost all of the medicinal properties lie. It's an incredibly fascinating part of the plant with real potential to help people. It also is totally non-oxidative. You could take a bath in the stuff while vaping pure CBD and drinking a CBD smoothie, and you still couldn't get high. Try. I haven't, I haven't. That costs a lot of money. Now, now, for, it's interesting and remarkable a part of the plant is CBD, and it actually makes up a really tiny portion of the commercial market. The real money is being made in that other chemical, in THC. So THC is the natural part of the plant that gets you high. And before the 1970s, cannabis contained less than half of a percent of THC, that's what's naturally occurring. Over the last 40 years, as we became better gardeners, that, that percentage of THC started to slowly but steadily rise, until recently, when the chemists started to get involved. These guys moved cultivation exclusively indoors, and they grow cycles extremely and unnaturally short. They also started to use pesticides and fertilizers in some ways that we should be concerned with. In fact, I was recently talking to a buddy who had just left a job in a commercial grow operation because he was so concerned with the chemicals that he was being asked to interact with. Some of his fellow employees were actually encouraged to wear hazmat suits while they were spraying their chemical cocktails on the plants. With, with that kind of manipulation, the product, the products that are being sold today can contain above 30 percent THC. And, and our concentrates, our concentrates can actually contain above 95 percent THC, a farm crime from the natural plant. Listen, this isn't your grandpa's weed. This isn't your dad's weed, it's like, like, this isn't even my weed. If you've ever stepped foot inside one of the thousands of dispensaries that have sprung up in recent years, you know that what we're really selling in them is THC. All of the weed that you buy commercially lists exactly how much THC it contains, as do our other much more popular products, like vape pens, coffee, ice cream, condiments, granola, gum, candy, baked goods, suppositories, and of course, lube, pretty much, for real. Pretty much anything that you can imagine introducing into the human body. The vast majority of cannabis that's being sold today, it isn't really cannabis. It's THC in either a pure form or in an extremely high and unnatural concentration. To say that we have legalized weed is suddenly misleading. We have commercialized THC, and it's happened really quickly. Now, the reason why the commercial market has so rapidly exploded is because there is a hell of a lot of money to be made in satisfying and increasing our desire to get high. And that money's no longer really being made by the mom and pop shops. So industry groups and corporations, groups like the Drug Policy Alliance, the Marijuana Policy Project, Arcview Investment, the Cannabis Industry Association, they, they've chased out and helped to chase out a lot of the small-time growers. So these cats know that the best way to get us to continue to, or to continue to profit off of us is if they follow the alcohol industry's 80/20 rule. That's it. It's where 80 percent of the product is consumed by 20 percent of the consumers, the problem users. The wealthy, white weed lobbyists, and seriously, they are almost all rich white men. They know that we will consume more of what they're selling if they jack up the policy. They also know that we are more than twice as likely to consume THC regularly if we earn under $50,000 a year than those, I'm sorry, if we earn under $20,000 a year than those who earn over $50,000 a year. In other words, the poorer you are, the more likely you are to spend your money on their products. And in this country, income and race are highly correlated. One of the reasons that we often hear cited for the legalization of marijuana is that it will help to stop the disproportionate incarceration rates among minorities, which is something everybody in this room should be extremely concerned with. Unfortunately, we, we don't have to look any further than arrest rates for juveniles here in Colorado to counter that argument. According to the Colorado Department of Public Safety, since we opened retail in 2014, almost all of which are in poor minority neighborhoods, we saw an 8 percent reduction in the arrest of white kids for all the weed-related activity. Good on them. During that same time period, there's a 29 percent increase in the arrest of Hispanic kids for weed-related activity, and a 58 percent increase in the arrest of black kids for weed-related crimes. You guys heard that, right? We are actually arresting more people of color in Colorado than we were prior to commercialization. And you're not reading that in the post. Another big issue that we have is in school suspension rates. So schools that are predominantly white, that is, they have a minority population of 25 percent or fewer, in the first full year of data collection following commercialization, these schools had a grand total of 190 drug-related suspensions, almost all of which are for THC. At the same time, schools with a minority population of 75 to 100 percent had 801 drug-related suspensions, almost all of which were for THC. When discussing minority populations, one that unfortunately often gets left out of the conversation is the LGBTQ community. Now, members of this community are more than twice as likely to consume THC than those who identify as heterosexual or cisgender. They also, unfortunately, have higher rates of mental illness and suicide. According to a study published in 2014 called Going to Pop, we see that the unnaturally high levels of THC found in today's products, they actually compound those issues, and make them worse. Unfortunately, that seems to matter very little to the folks who are selling these products, because as you just saw, clearly, this is a good consumer base. Listen, man, I get it, in, in many circles, legalized marijuana is just too much of a sacred cow to question. But we need to start this conversation, because what's being sold today is not natural, and lobbyists in the industry are using social justice as a smokescreen so that they can get richer. It's my own journey to sobriety that led me to begin questioning a lot of what I was seeing, and that's kind of one of the things that we're taught to do. When I left Boulder...
I'm just going to stop it there. He tells some of his story. He used, he started using marijuana when he was 13, and that led to addiction, and finally got out of that addiction, and now is a crusader against the product. I think that certainly informed me a, a little bit about wanting to keep the, the distribution, the sale of, and any more cultivation of the product in our city. And I, I would like to, to bring to the council at our next meeting an ordinance that, that we can decide what we want to do with, that prohibits the, the sale, distribution, and the craft-growing of marijuana. I have a sample ordinance from the city of Morton, and we could just put in it, with the exception of, of Flat Rock, if you want. So I'll leave all of these things with the clerk, so that she can photocopy some of them and make them available to all of you, okay?
I have some questions.
If anybody wants to react to it, please feel free.
I have some questions for the Commissioner. Why Colorado? You mentioned that there are now 11 states that have legalized marijuana.
Yeah.
But everybody who brings up a bad take on legalization always brings up Colorado. Is it because Colorado legislation was perhaps flawed? How, how do they handle their licensing for their distribution centers?
Yeah. The reason I researched Colorado is because the data was plentiful.
Okay.
And they were the, one of the, the first states to enact that legislation, so they've got the longest record. So you've got the most data from that state, and that's why.
So, another question. How will preventing the distribution or sale, which would be regulated under Illinois law, under the Cannabis, Cannabis, Cannabis Act?
Yeah.
How will that prevent people from abusing marijuana?
Yeah, well, it won't. I mean, marijuana will be legal in the state.
That is correct.
It's just they won't be purchasing it, we won't be growing it, we won't be encouraging that in the City of Zion.
But you can't, under the act, you can't prevent somebody from going to?
No, they can go to Waukegan and bring it back to.
Beach Park or, or Pleasant, or, or, excuse me, Beach Park or Antioch, purchasing it and coming back here?
Yeah.
And consuming it, correct?
Same when we were a dry town. I mean, if somebody wanted to buy alcohol in, in Zion when we were dry, they had to go outside the city limits to.
But it doesn't prevent, we still have, if there are negative impacts from the consumption of marijuana?
Absolutely.
We will still have the same effect, as we do currently now, under total prohibition?
Well, if I was a state legislator, I would have voted against it.
Okay.
I, I didn't have that vote. I certainly let my opinion be known to our representatives in Illinois, but they chose not to listen to myself and others that opposed the sale of marijuana in the state.
And currently, there are some neighboring communities in Lake County that have distribution centers, such as Highland Park, Mundaline, actually, Mundaline has the, the first, one of the first distribution centers. Did you do any investigation whether they've had any increase in crime or, or other issues with those, those distribution centers?
Well, it's a different, it's a medical marijuana, so.
What's, what's the distinction? I don't understand.
You don't understand the difference?
I, 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 no. Because either under, under either case, the person purchasing it has to be, has to have special certification, in the case of recreational, they would have to be of legal age.
Sure.
So what would the difference be?
The requirements for having a, you have to have a medical card.
A medical card, right.
And you have to have that from a doctor, so that there are much more stringent requirements for medical marijuana. And actually, I don't, I don't have a problem with medical marijuana.
Okay.
I have a problem with the, the sale and distribution of recreational marijuana in the City of Zion.
Okay.
That's just, that's my opinion about it.
Okay. Does anyone else have any questions?
I don't really have any questions. I mean, I guess just from watching the video, I'm curious about that distinction between how medical marijuana is okay, but if really it's not, you know, cannabis in the natural state, and it's THC.
Mayor, we gotta take a break, I gotta switch TV.
A pause for technical issues.
We have three or four minutes to kind of reload the second one.
I, I guess while we're having a recess and having the tape changed, I saw that Mr. Stevens, you, you had a questions, maybe we can, no? We got hold up?
We have to wait until I don't want to have it.
We got to wait.
If we're going to do that, then we should probably take a minute to recess for five, or try to say no more than five minutes.
All right. Is, is there a motion to?
So moved.
Second. Clerk?
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Fryerson?
If you still, if still, no matter what, we're going to have to deal with the, with any problems, whether, whether we allow sales or not, without the rest. And here we are, we got people screaming about $26,000, which is a drop in the bucket of things to be concerned about. Right. We need to get down, not to, you know, to just really leave it on their face because they got a tight time schedule, they got a lot of people that are in the church, and they need people to, to talk to, and they want to talk to. Exactly. And you can't, it's like, we don't get down the screen by time, it's too late.
it's, 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 uh, 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 it's,[1482.12]
So do you have a proposed amendment, or are you saying alleviated completely?
I think I'm agreeing with our Police Chief and our Director of Public Works to keep the ordinance as is. But I said I would bring it to council, so I am. I could be overruled. That has happened on occasion.
I think I'm in agreement with the Commissioner for a number of reasons. Number one, instituting a street parking would interfere with snow removal operations and maintenance. The other things are enforcement. You know, if, you know, if some of the streets has been noted are somewhat narrow and if you have parking on both sides of the street, that can possibly obstruct traffic and cause some incidents that we don't want to have happen. I sympathize with the people who do have this situation where they have a bevy of automobiles that they have to deal with. But I don't see that we would necessarily want to make a change to this ordinance at this time.
Would there possibly be a consideration for something like alternate night parking? You know, you park on a certain side of the street?
I think that comes back to the enforcement part. You know, how much manpower or time do we want to spend enforcing parking? And that's the other question I have. How often do we issue tickets? Do we know?
Where is your nightly?
I mean, seriously, no. I know Mr. Macklemore, but really, you know, how often do people get tickets?
That's the job of the night shift officers, the ones enforcing that. So that's part of their routine.
Okay. If, you know, it might be helpful in a future discussion if we can get like an annual figure of how many we get. Just curiosity.
Yeah, my suggestion in terms of alternate parking, you know, posted signs, if you will, and even during, like, for the winter months, you know, particularly the enforcement would be key. Just a consideration.
I guess this is an issue that we'll continue to investigate. And I know one of the things that will happen, we'll have citizen comments. Mr. Macklemore, I think you came in a couple of years ago and maybe last year, you talked about it. And one of the questions I think I asked you at that time, we know where each other lives. You have multiple cars at your house. You have items in your garage which prevent you from storing a car in your garage.
I have a car in there.
Okay. Any event, you rent the property and I also know that in the alleyway, there is sufficient, if your landlord or your building, the person that owns your building, if there was additional parking was an issue, that there's a pad back there that he could, he could probably install back there for additional parking.
I had tickets for being owned.
Well, all I saw was grass area. In any event.
We had it over there where the fence was. We took the fence down, we made more room to put a car there. And the police think there was a ticket. They claimed there was a ticket. Like that, your home people, the people that come, they drive around in the morning, they come through the alley and they get a ticket.
Code enforcement, I think that's one of the things, without further comment, our code enforcement offers, officers take on a lot of responsibility. We've talked a lot about city stickers. We've talked about parking and being, them being able to supplement the police department in terms of what they do to take some of that responsibility off of their shoulders. We want our law enforcement to be able to really continue to enforce for some of the bigger issues that we have in town. Again, I'd like to talk about, I mean, when you start talking about those things, oh, close to 500 gunshots being fired over the last couple of years. Those are a little bit more serious issues than parking enforcement for our police officers. So we'll consider, we'll continue to keep our minds open to change, but in talking with our Public Works Director and Chief Henderson, which I chatted with him today, and Lieutenant Vilarde, if you'd like to offer some comments, we'll do that in departmental commentary. We'll continue to be open to change about different things, but also have to be practical about the reasons of why we have those particular ordinances in place.
But Mayor, if you do the research, you'll see why that law was, that ordinance was even put in. It was only put in because the garbage people used to pick up the garbage at night. That's why the ordinance was put in.
Street sweeper.
Now that that's been changed, the ordinance never did change.
So I agree with you that the origination of the ordinance may have been something different. However, modern day concerns are still different. You still have the snowplows, you still have the street sweepers, you still have ticketing and things like that, right? So just as a practical example for my neighborhood, what I don't want to happen is people parking on the street overnight and they're at a house down the street or a house on the next block because they want to divert the attention of where they're at. So right now, things are contained. It gives a formal, organized look to the neighborhood and it's something that I appreciate because, you know what I mean, it gives me comfort when I'm coming home late or when my wife or my children or anyone else is coming home. It's, you know what I mean, I know where people are. So I think it's a bigger discussion than just some of the one-off cases where we've been inconvenienced. Because I've had the same issue, you know what I mean? I have, you know, kids now that drive and so we have the same parking, you know, issues. But again, those variances don't outweigh the larger concern on why it's still a good idea to have it. So I'm open to maybe amending it, but to completely get rid of it is not something I would be in favor of at this point.
Any more commentary from our Commissioners? Excuse me. Item 11, departmental commentary, starting with Director Einson.
Thank you, Your Honor. The last City Council meeting, the department chairman made comments regarding permits for replacing windows. He didn't agree that they would be required, could need a permit to replace a window, but I want to give you some information regarding that. Permits are required for windows under Section R 105-1 of the International Residential Building Code and Section 10-4A1 of the Zion Municipal Code. Some of the reasons are to protect the residence, to ensure proper installation, to comply with the mandated energy code. And a typical inspection that would go along with that permit would be check the proper operation, applies with the energy code, meets egress requirements, sealed, coughed, insulated, flash properly, framing if required, tempered glassware required. So along with the permit, we do go out and inspect it and ensure that the windows are installed properly.
There were the, the gentleman that presented his argument was Tim Stanfield, who was not a Zion resident. And my question at that time that I didn't get a chance to ask was, was he a homeowner here or was he a landlord?
He owns the property behind Applebee's.
So he's a landlord?
He is.
And so he was commenting about a $750 fine that he received from the building department. And part of that was, from what I was told by Inspector Einson, Director Einson, excuse me, that he avoided all of the notices sent to him by the city about violations on his property. So the $750 fine was to get his attention to come in and talk about it, which obviously he did. He didn't talk about at that moment that he was a landlord, that he did, he was a landlord of the property, that he also was involved with suing the city and that it's been against our rental house certification inspection program, which deals with life and safety issues. Life and safety issues and windows, as Director Einson read, are part of the permit. And he wanted to turn it into a tit for tat. Well, what if I change a light bulb? Everything is explained in the codes. If there is a question that you have about rental properties, Ms. Lewis, I believe that's your name, brought the young lady, talked to us about the inspection program.
Oh, Julia Patterson.
Excuse me, Ms. Patterson talked about that. We do have a process when we have complaints and we have issues or concerns, that they talk with the Director of the Department and we usually get things straightened out. And the one thing that I, that I would ask when we have citizen comments is that sometimes our citizens in this last instance that we're referring to, they come in and they give a portion of the information so that it puts a black eye on the city. But they don't tell the other part of it, about the violations that they've had, the fact that he didn't take the time to come in and get a permit. And then when he was fined, and the fine was significant enough, now he wants to say the city is nickel and diming him to death.
And, Mr. Mayor, he's in the trades, so he should have known that.
Permits are necessary.
Absolutely.
So a $55, would you rather pay $55 now, if you're watching it, would you rather pay a $55 permit to get your windows inspected properly so your residents are safe and able to get out? Or do you want to continue to have this battle of coming to City Council meeting when you should be going to the Director and dealing with a $750 fine? We, as a city, one of the things that we have tried to do and we're continuing to do, we've had a meeting with the landlords and real estate agents and residents and having this open dialogue about what we can do to improve the value of the homes in our city. We want our landlords that own property here to make money. We want our properties to be safe. We want them to be clean for our residents. And that means life and safety issues. So those are things that we focus on as a city. So, Mr. Macklemore, you talk about working together. We are trying to do that. Yet there are some people that continue to want to, as they say, buck the system. And they're going to continue to try to interpret the code for their personal satisfaction and not for overall. And I guess that would be like me going into Pastor Fielding's church and trying to tell him about the scripture and how I interpret it. We're going to have different interpretations. So we have experts in our respective fields that deal with that. They deal with people respectfully. They deal with people earnestly and try to, to try to help resolve the issues and not have issues with the city. We're not trying to be adversarial with our residents. We want this to be a great place to live, which we know that it, that it is. Director Einson, did you have any more comments?
No, I couldn't.
All right. Director Roberts?
I'd like to remind residents that our chipping program is no longer being handled through Public Works Department. We've received multiple calls on when we're going to try and kind of pick that up with them. Advance disposal will still dispose of that if it is done properly. You can call Public Works, they can identify exactly how advance requires that to be bundled. Or it's also posted on our website. The other thing I do understand is we see multiple calls, we do, we do see these roads. We're not polite. We're trying to do our best. I'd like to inform people that we have 805 blocks within the city of Zion. 146 of those are what we consider a failed state. That's relevant to probably $30, $35 million to reconstruct those roads. So, and that's not even touching out. We have a nine-person crew within the street department that is trying to handle this. So we are out there daily trying to take care of these, these issues. So if you call, and please call us, because we do want to generate workforce for the potholes, for your concerns in the out, so that we can keep a log of that. In two weeks, if we haven't been out there and you're calling and screaming at me, understand there's 20 other, 30 other residents are doing the same thing because we haven't gotten there yet. We do try to get out there as fast as we can. A lot of these potholes are no longer just potholes, they're areas that we have to dig out and replace. So it takes a lot more time.
Thank you, Director Roberts. And in that vein, too, you talk about the failed state of our infrastructure. And I believe since January 1st, we've had how many water main breaks?
We're 43 now.
43 water main breaks in our city. And I want to take this back to our discussion about hiring some help in Springfield, lobbyists to help us with this. We've talked to, we are blue in the face with some of our elected officials and they talked to us about how much Zion means to them and how they want to work with us to help us resolve some of these issues. We submitted a $27 million road program for the capital funding. That comes around every five to 10 years, the capital bill. They've been here to Zion. And I know they have a tremendous amount of work to do. But one of the things that we don't want to do as a City Council and one of the reasons we made this move is we don't want them to forget about what we're trying to do here. Illinois, Lake County, as all of us know, has, and Illinois has the second highest property taxes in the country. Lake County is one of the wealthiest counties in our country. Yet some of the repairs and things that we need in our city, north of Lake Bluff and some of the other affluent communities, we need to get some of that money working for us here. So it's just one of the reasons we are, we've looked into these things. We just don't do these things mindlessly. There is a thought process behind them of trying to get the additional help that we need and expand our sphere of influence with our state representatives and even national in some cases, to get the money that we deserve, whether it's for spent fuel rods or to fix our roads. We've got a couple of state highways that run right through us, right through our city, Sheridan Road, 173. And we're always dealing with issues on 173 when there's flooding. We need that state funding to repair that state road and they don't give us enough. They want us to repair it. Give us the money to do that. We deserve that. We don't deserve to be left behind when it comes to handing out and distributing money to help us improve our community. Director Nabel?
I'd just like to expand a little bit with one other item on the overnight parking discussion that, that comes into play. You know, we talked about plow, you talked about knowing who's in the neighborhood. But another thing is a lot of our streets aren't wide enough to cover parking on both sides of the street. I've seen it a lot of times, I was talking to Director Roberts about it too. You know, where you have, people have to pull off because a car is coming, because cars are parked on both sides of the street. That is even worse at night when there aren't lights, when the visibility is down. So it becomes a significant safety issue because, like, as I said, the streets weren't designed wide enough for two lanes of parking at night as well as full of two-way traffic. So that is, that's another reason behind why this has evolved from the initial ordinance to what it is now. And again, to expand on something on there, McKenney said, you know, obviously residents are always welcome to come to council with concerns and issues. But we have a great staff here of department heads and I would recommend that they be the first ones that you go to, to address issues. If you're, if that's not resolved, come to me. If that's not resolved, each department has a Commissioner over that department. You know, if you want to be heard, I understand, but usually that can be addressed well in advance of only having an outlet every two weeks. So just make sure we're here every day. Our phones, our offices are always open. You can usually get, get answers right away rather than have to wait two weeks to get something addressed. So if you're not getting that resolved, just follow the channel, please.
Yeah, and to add to that, we are accessible. We do return calls. And sometimes we have department heads in their defense when people say, well, I called them yesterday or today and they didn't get back to me. Well, they're out in the field getting work done and managing truncated workforce for the city. We've got 104 employees, I believe about that for the city, 104, close?
A little more.
A little more. But we've got almost 25,000 citizens. So that there are some issues that we have in our city, whether it's cleanup of your neighborhoods and different things that you can help with, that you don't have to call our department heads to resolve some of the lighter issues that might take place within your neighborhood or within your community. But trust that we are open to communication and we are making every effort we can to get back to people to resolve the issues that they're facing. Chief Lewis?
9:30 is close to my bedtime, so I don't know. But I'll keep it short. I'll keep it short. So I try to bring a little safety tip now, every council meeting. So in light of a lot of what's been happening lately in the news, and I won't take away from law enforcement, that's not my gig, but if you look from a fire safety standpoint, think about your surroundings all the time. I mean, we, we preach all the time, twice a year, check your batteries, check your smoke detectors. And people have learned that from kindergarten. But when you're walking in Walmart, you know you walk in the front door, but if you're in the back and something happens, you know how to get out of the back of Walmart, the back of Jewel. When you're staying in a hotel room and you're above the second or third floor, do you ever wonder, where's the stairwell and where does it go out? I'll urge you to always find a stairwell, open it up, see where it goes down, and then count the number of doors from the stairwell back to your room. So in the event you have to crawl out, you're not wondering where you're at. You know you count six doors from the wall you came across and down the stairs you go. I mean, when you're in the business, that becomes natural. But I'm pretty sure most of you, when you get that nice comfy hotel room at Hilton, you're not thinking, oh, where's the stairway and what happens if this place burns up? Everybody wants that penthouse room on the 34th floor, but I'll tell you, there's very few ladder trucks that reach 348 to get you out in an emergency. You know, just things to think about.
Thank you. Chief, yeah. And I also want to add something on that regard too, because we have this issue sometimes with older homes in Zion. And I had this with a resident that, that had a bedroom in a basement that did, only had one area of egress. And so older homes, which I have an older home, was built in 1961, I had to put an egress window in the basement area where I do have a bedroom, so that I had more than one way to get out. And I think about all the years my family has lived there since 1962. With six kids being there, we never thought about that safety issue and having just one way out in case the furnace caught on fire, which was by the stair. And the stairs being small enough. So when we're, our building department is talking about egress windows in older homes, it's not the city trying to penalize you, it's trying to keep safe and be up to code. And that's one of the things that we are, we are working to do. Lieutenant Vilarde, thanks for filling in for Chief Henderson. I know he's on his way back from Alaska. I followed him a couple of times on the trip, thinking he'd be back, but thanks for filling in, give us a little update.
Just a couple more points about the two to six parking. It does become a valuable tool with the police department, wanting curbing a lot of the loitering, loud music and drinking that goes on. If vehicles let down in the street during the sun, that's kind of where people congregate, so by keeping the streets clear, so we can kind of cut down a little bit on that. It also does prevent inoperable vehicles being left in the street. Somebody doesn't want to work on their vehicle in the driveway, get it all oil stained. There's nothing to prevent them from working out on the street, leaving it there for a few days at a time, so I'm kind of cuts down on that. Another is it's one less opportunity for somebody to walk by and try door handles on cars, walk down the street to see if they're open. People pay a lot more attention to what's going on in their driveway than they do in the street. So obviously they're going to be watching their property a little bit more than any vehicles parked in the street. Once again, a couple of points that I've not brought before. Also, it's one way for us to locate stolen vehicles. We've found, we usually come across, once in a while, when we're issuing a citation up on the plate, that is parked on the street, and we recover the vehicles from no shall wait down north Chicago, you know that. So that's kind of what we need.
Right. Thank you very much. I know it's 9:30, past some people's bedtime, quote everyone, quote once in a while, but I just want to close with a couple of thoughts and thank our city employees, our volunteers and our residents that were involved in our second annual cleanup day, which occurred last Saturday, August 3rd. And... And, uh, our, our staff did a tremendous job. Our fill-in clerk here, Economic Development Director, Sonalita Bronson, uh, shared the, a lot of the workload with our building department and public works about getting volunteers to get out and clean up different areas. The Hebron Town Homes, our Public Works Department, uh, made sure that we cleaned up some areas. And again, my idea about cleanup day, this is the second year we've had it. We've had tremendous involvement. We want to get our residents more involved, but we want to get to the point where the cleanup days aren't necessary. That each person at each block will take ownership and pride in their own block. And even after garbage days, where sometimes the recycling and trash gets blown around, instead of calling Public Works, take a bag out like I do every Saturday, or every day when I'm out with my dog and I pick up debris in my neighborhood. If we can do those kinds of things, or if you see a, a drain plugged in your neighborhood, unplug it, take the debris away. Bottles, debris, leaves. It helps with the flooding issues that we've had. So we all need to do a little bit more, citizens, to help our, just over 100 employees out each day with 30 minutes, 30 minutes a week. You can do something in your neighborhood that will transform it and make it better. You'll also find when you're out doing those things, you get a chance to meet your neighbors and develop a relationship with them, which is great for safety and comfort and growing together as, as we like to do in the city. Uh, today is National Night Out. Most cities are enjoying that, but we're going to have our National Night Out during our Community of Character Walk, Mrs. Bronson, which is in September?
September 12.
September 12th, we're going to have our, our National Night Out. We encourage everybody to come out and we walk a route through the city with a lot of people. We have vendors, I meet over by the police, uh, department so that you get a chance to meet our, our employees and different people from different neighborhoods. Uh, third, third and last item I want to talk about is, uh, we've been working hard to work with our other taxing bodies to get cooperation to help do things in our city. Uh, two years ago, I had spoken with Marilyn Krieger, the executive director of the Park District, about putting, placing strategically in our city garbage cans in different areas. As you see on 29th and the boulevards, we have some, some garbage cans out. Uh, we encourage our citizens to use those instead of dropping the trash. They're also working with the county right now to place those garbage cans on the bike trail, uh, the Robert McClory Bike Trail, which is just, uh, west of Galilee, and keeping that area, uh, fresh and, and clean as well, so that if people are walking and riding their bikes, walking their dogs, uh, that they have a good environment in which to do so. Uh, the garbage cans will be good, too. Uh, there's one of my pet peeves, there's people that have pets and then they don't clean up after them. That impacts all of us, which is just absolutely inconsiderate. And we want to have that consideration for our neighbors, uh, with, with this thought process. So thank you for, uh, your comments tonight, your, your attendance and involvement, your interest in helping our community grow. And we'll go to, uh, item 12 now, which is announcements. August 20th, at 6:15, we have our Zion Township Board Meeting. At 7:00 PM on August 20th, we have our Zion City Council Meeting. Bring more people to come back and be involved with, uh, giving us suggestions, uh, as to how we, what we can do to improve our city. September 2nd, city offices are closed for the holiday. September 3rd, uh, 7 o'clock PM, we have a Zion City Council Meeting going into the fall. That's it. Is there a motion to adjourn? Second. All in favor? Aye.